I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Good morning. In front of you, you have the edit list and the financials that have been provided. There are several items of note in this week's financials. The first are some supplemental appropriations. One is for the law enforcement training fund. The other is for the community development block grant fund. In addition, under the encumbrances, we have two items that are noteworthy. A new contract for masonry cleaning, ceiling and joint repair, and the jog aboard of D E for $23,140.55. In addition, we have one travel encumbrance for the auditor's office. Finally, in the voucher section, there are a couple of notes there as well. We have a payment to InterSource Corporation for the upgrade to the Cisco Voice Manager phone system for $12,281.25. And then we have a $9,900 payment to the S-Scale Institute for IT security training. Questions?
Commissioner's office requesting the board approve Mexico Resolution Number 16-071, itemizing the financials for the meeting of June 7th, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Commissioner's rear?
Aye.
Commissioner's back?
Aye. I could've got that, I'm sorry. I was just, I was just kinda taxed by putting that paper clip back in.
Commissioner's office will report on items approved April, June 3rd, 2016 by the county administrator authorized by Resolution Number 16-005 under the direction and supervision of county commissioners that was approved January 11, 2016 pursuant to O R C 05.3.
And it was an item, singular. I accepted the resignation of Edwin Hague, hard-time driver for transit, job number 2210-1.
Community and economic development. Who shows up today?
I love you, give me two tires in a row. Oh, well, I guess I'd have to come over.
So how do you guys do that? You like roll the dice before you come over to the city?
No, Kelly's in Tulsa, so.
Tulsa, Oklahoma.
Yeah, and I guess, but not too rainy, it's, you know, true. All right, this is the final, well, almost the final, we'll have a grant agreement at some point. But this is to choose projects that will be funded next year with the community development block grant funds. And based on some input from the commissioners, it appears that this configuration will fulfill some of the requirements of the board. But it's to fund the Pleasant Hill County Home, the projects at Kiwanis Lake Community Center, and the projects with the maintenance department, which will add to $140,800. Do you want the individual amounts for each project?
Yeah.
Okay. County Home is $21,379. The three separate Kiwanis Lake projects are first $29,400, second $15,750, the second $15,750, and maintenance department $58,521. It's a total of $140,800. These will mostly address, well, ADA concerns for the maintenance department, finishing off the bathrooms for CASA, and bringing them to ADA standard. Kiwanis Lake is a lot of windows, roofing, gutters, furnace, et cetera, and Pleasant Hill County Home is flooring in as many places as we can get.
You know, the kitchen, I haven't been over there in a while, but the kitchen over there where CASA is, that was really in bad shape, and so I was looking at them, and they were talking about being short of funds. I didn't know whether that was considered.
Well, you'd have to, that would be something more for the, well, what the feds are looking for is that you're helping, you're assisting, you're making it easier for the public to access the public building.
Oh, it's purely ADA.
Right, and it's not easier for the workers if you're helping with those public.
Okay, gotcha. All right, any other questions?
The motion is that they would announce the projects chosen for the 2016 to be Development Block Grant Allocation Program as explained by the.
Should I take the action? Put in the proof of that?
Well, we actually don't need an action because we'll come back with the application. We just wanna make sure that if there's an issue, we need to know now, so if that's acceptable, we'll come back with the application in probably two weeks.
So I guess what you need from us right now is if we have, one of us has an objection.
Right, right, because this is what will be put into an application form and then brought back.
From bait, yeah, from based on what you've told me and what I saw on a paper, it's probably on my desk, I have no objection to any of that.
Yeah, we don't need an official action, we just wanna make sure, because we don't talk to you as a group, so we don't know how you, I'll look at it, yeah, well, I'll go, this is my chance.
But you don't wanna show up next week with this thing in paper, and then all of a sudden, one of us say, oh, I got it.
Why don't we do this one instead?
That's so much more fun that way.
I know, I know.
Because then the press has something you, come on.
We're learning, we're learning.
Good cartoon.
That's right, that's right. All right, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. Who's up for the county engineer? Both?
Both.
She's bringing a double team today.
Good morning.
Good morning. Looks like I'm up first. We're here to get the board's approval to move forward with our bid specifications for resurfacing a proportion of Nelson Road in Parkman Township. The total project cost is estimated at $110,000. If the board approves the plans today, we would go out to bid on Thursday and open on June 29th.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board approve Mexico Resolution Number 16-073 to order the improvement of Nelson Road, CH2, Section C in Parkman Township. This resolution also requests the board approve and execute the title sheet for the specifications for the same. Further, this resolution sets a date to be held on Wednesday, June 29, 2016, at 2:00 P.M. Notice that the bid opening will be advertised on June 9, 2016, and on the county website. Do you have that slide ready?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Commissioner's rear?
Aye.
Commissioner's back?
Aye.
Assume you're up now.
I guess I am.
No.
I'm gonna mirror Shane's request that we ask the board to bring permission to advertise going out for a road project for a salt conveyor, which is sort of phase two of the project that we began about a year and a half, built a new building. You know, Joe and I had discussed for years, the idea would be the next three or four years to solely purchase more solid material if we can afford it, and then build up an inventory in there, and in order to sort of get maximum capacity out of it, obviously, we're filled up, so that's where we're at now. Like to follow that procedure where we'd advertise on the 9th, and then open bids on the 29th of June.
What's the range, General?
Andre conveyor. You know, we put together some specifications for it, but essentially, we're looking to get something that will stack at least 35 feet high. Based on that number, we get just over 13,000 tons of material in the building, 13,500 tons, I think it holds 14,000 tons, I think, perfectly, but it would give us a significant amount there. And then with the tires, we're gonna then build them around and really pack it out, so the idea is to really get as much as possible, so.
Before we hit the new building, if memory serves me correct, you guys did have a conveyor?
We did, right, we had one a few years ago.
Yeah, a number of years ago.
We've always had one.
But it was older, and so on, is, what's the difference, is there a?
It wasn't so much that it was older necessarily, is that it's stacking height is maybe like 25 feet.
Okay.
And if you use that ability of this size, you know, maybe you max out, I think you said, just over 10,000 feet, so we'd be leaving 4,000, or 10,000, we're leaving over 4,000 tons that we couldn't use. So that was where that one had to go, and it actually worked out very well, we got into a sharing agreement with Bankers Township, it benefited them based on their size facility, it worked for everybody on that, and so we just need to replace that machine.
Yeah, I just remember there was one, I don't remember the details and so on. Now, what's the height of that, of that, inside of that, the inside height of that solid store?
The door's what, 40, the door's 40 feet, so 50, something, 55, 56, something like that. But again, it doesn't matter the height so much as the walls to where you can stack.
Yeah, I think you're gonna put it up, and it's gonna have that slope coming down.
Sure, so it'd go as high as the side concrete walls.
12 feet or something?
Yeah, just over 12 feet.
The county engineer's office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for bids for one current model salt conveyor to be held on Wednesday, June 29, 2016, at 2:15 P.M. Notice that this bid opening will be advertised on June 9, 2016, and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Commissioner's rear?
Aye.
Commissioner's back?
Thank you, Ellen.
I'll get the copies.
Proprio General Court is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute via how Department of Youth Services subsidy, Grand General Court funding application update through July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017, for a base allocation of $139,537, with a possible carryover in the amount of $153,111.44 from fiscal year 2016.
Second?
Commissioner's rear?
Aye.
Commissioner's back?
Aye.
Morning.
Morning. Hey, Mike.
Good morning.
You guys, a lot more proceed with the Chesapeake facility over there. I see a lot of cars parked over there, so I'm assuming that people are driving their cars around and taking the chances there. I don't know if that's impacted you positively or negatively.
We haven't lost anything, because of people being able to drive there, they haven't had to park it, but they haven't been much used, so.
I think some people are driving two cars there, because I poked my head in the other there to see how full it was, and it wasn't a lot of people, but there was a lot of cars in it, so I'm not sure if there's not driving two cars there, but anyway, with that said, go ahead.
Okay.
We're requesting permission to advertise for two positions of part-timers, and those are positions that remain open, always available to fill. We just had a stable lune to in the opening, we had one, first day after a week, was a great candidate, but felt hours, two days a week, would impact his social life significantly other. And we have one driver that's medical, and I'm not sure he's going to come after them. So, I just can't seem to get over these last couple guys. That's why we need them.
The Transit Department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for two positions of part-time driver number 2210-1. These positions will remain posted until filled.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Commissioner's rear?
Aye.
Commissioner's back?
Thank you, guys.
You too. You too, now.
So you got back from Philly?
Yeah, about 9:15 last night.
Wow. What was the problem?
The flight, because we're flying in and out of Akron Canton, the flight from Akron Canton to Philly on Sunday night got canceled because of the bad storms that were coming through, so I'd never made it to Philly, so there wasn't a freight to come back, and I only had one flight from Philly to Akron Canton in the day, and it wasn't until 5:00 P.M. yesterday.
I cannot think of a worse airport than this, than Philly.
Well, we did, we did get, I did take the chance to, as I told my wife, make some lemonade out of the lemon, that's what we were given, so we went and toured the historical district of Philly, and saw Independence Hall, and Liberty Bell, and all that stuff.
Oh, that's cool.
So I basically said, I told her, I said, well, I don't have to come back to Philly now, because I've done everything that I would've wanted to.
That impressed the family, didn't it? Kids that wanted to go there for their social studies project.
Well, that's a, five and seven-year-old, seven-year-old was a little bit more interested in it than the five-year-old. Five-year-old just wanted to play in the grass. First two items here are associated with our Troy Oaks, we're entering in plant conversion, turning into pump station, pumping across the reservoir to Auburn Corners plant, and the upgrades we will have to do on Auburn Corners. This is the loan that we're obtaining through Ohio Water Development Authority, this is just authorizing. First one is to authorize the president of the board to sign, take work in the resolution, and the second one is actually to sign the request for the loan.
No questions?
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution Number 16-073, authorizing Walter M. Claypool, president of the County Board of Commissioners, to apply for, accept, and enter into a cooperative agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the Ohio Water Development Authority for planning, design, and/or construction of Troy Oaks wastewater treatment plant conversion project, and further execute the Ohio Water Development Authority general certificate. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of the board to execute the cooperative agreement for construction, maintenance, and operation of state water project, or wastewater project with the Ohio Water Development Authority, OWDA, in regards to the Troy Oaks wastewater treatment plant conversion project in the amount of $3,262,178.
I'll make those motions.
Second?
Commissioner's rear?
Aye.
Commissioner's back?
Aye.
Go ahead.
The next item here is a request to, from, to amend the 208 for Auburn Township. The property is one of the, one of the three properties, it was the old Auburn Springs Golf Course. Gentlemen, this person just stole three properties, is looking to build, I understand, build a house on the bowling alley lot that's the farthest west of the three properties. Currently, our force main that runs from Lorian Woods subdivision, that takes the sewage from Lorian Woods, pumps across through that property, we have Neesman across that bowling alley property, and it discharges into the Auburn Lakes sewer system, where then it goes through Auburn Lakes gravity system, to our Auburn Lakes pump station, and that pumps up to Tanglewood, and from there, works its way down, I remember, to Auburn's plant. This is a request by the, by that individual to, if he wants to tie his building that he's building on that, on that strip parcel into the sewer system that we have there, the force main is on that property right now, but it was never included in the, in the 208, because it was the, basically, the transmission line for the pump station from Lorian Woods to Auburn Lakes. If we do authorize this, he will, we will require him to actually tie into the gravity sewer that, where that force main ties into, because we're not permitting connections to any force mains at this point. It just makes sense, we do have some force mains where we'd have that, but those were force mains that were put in by developers, and there was a cost recovery associated with it. My preference is to never, is to never have anybody, every, any private property tied into a, into any of our force mains, because we don't have any control over those individual private pump stations, and I don't wanna, the pressure valve to fail when we wind up pumping sewage into some of these basements, allowing private connections to our force mains.
Can you explain that again, because you lost me with that one?
The force main runs across that property. The building he would put in would have to have, would have to run a gravity line or his own private pump station service lateral.
Oh, you're saying?
To the sewer line.
Rather than tying directly.
Rather than tying into the force mains, I don't want people tying their private systems into that company.
Let me bring up to the commissioners some concern that I have on this particular item. I had some calls from citizens on this specific issue, and I talked to one of the trustees, and calls into the other trustees on this issue. The concern is, this is not really a private owner, this is a LLC that owns these properties, and it's in conjunction with the property, which is all, used to be the golf course. And so there's some concern that, on the part of the citizens that called me, that this is a step towards housing that, and sewer-ing that, what used to be the golf course, with a development area.
High density.
With a high density development area. And so, you know, we are the ultimate approval authority at the end of this. The townships, as a courtesy, we give them approval authority, but it's a courtesy, it's not a requirement. And so there is a concern on the part of some citizens, that this is just moving toward, now you've got this property next to the golf course sewer, that's just a step now toward getting that larger piece of property set up to do that. So, in deference to those that called me, I'd like to suggest that maybe we have a hearing on this, and have the gentleman come in and talk to us about it before we approve it. And again, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other on this, I can see some logic in possibly tying this in, but if this is staging, and I don't know if we have any authority, or would even care if that was developed, but I just thought that I'd bring that up to you, because there were some citizens that were very concerned about that, they called me and talked to me about it, so I'm bringing it up for awareness purposes, in any word. So if you care whether that's gonna be a housing area back in there, and would like to hear from the individuals making this request, we have the right, and there's no, there's no burning bush here, we don't have to approve this today, we've just, we've got time, if we wanted to have them come in and talk to us, so, so, it's, I bring that up.
I don't know, I mean, I just, you know, heard of this, no, I don't, I don't know what, what our position is on something like this.
Well, if you'd like to beg on it. What's your opinion?
The, well, the sewer system we have in Auburn Lakes, as well as the pump station on Force Main, is not, it's not at capacity right now, but based on, we're obligated to provide capacity for in the Queensway, God's Shot Parkway, industrial parks, where we have, where that, that flow comes through Auburn Lakes also. The Auburn Lakes gravity sewer is, will be at capacity when those additional properties are tied in. The pump station and Force Main are, will be at capacity also. So we have the room to put one, you know, put one, one house in, but any other ones, and I know I have talked to other people prior to this, gentleman, his business purchasing those, that golf course, there were other people who were interested in it, and my statement to them was, if you ever, if there ever was gonna be sewer there, because that's why they approached us, was could we sewer this? And so if there ever is to be sewer there, there, there would be a requirement that they have to pay for the upgrades that we would need to do with the gravity sewer in Auburn Lakes, as well as the pump station in Force Main, which could run more than $2 million. Prior to that, you know, the other, the, one, one of the individuals was the gentleman who, his company's doing the lantern in South Russell, he was looking to do a similar project, which is Alzheimer's care facility on there, that kind of, you know, that basically said, he said, no, I'm not interested in it at that point. Another one was someone who was looking to do housing development, and they said, they wanted, told him it would be about probably at least $2 million to upgrade that, at their cost, they backed away, the person, the property, and I don't know what this, I've, I, prior to about two weeks ago, or three weeks ago, I never talked to the, the actual individual who was building this house, or, I guess it's been referred to as his man cave, I don't know what that officially means, but, you know, I only talked to people who were working with him about asking, what would it be to get that one property approved, so.
I know that one of it.
I can understand the concern over, you know, is that gonna lead to this, the one thing I would say, is one of our arguments back would be, is we prove this one to be in the 208, because it actually does have sewer line on it, the other parcels in there don't, but that's, how strong an argument that is, I don't, I know that would be when it came to the court.
That's kinda where I'm at, okay, I mean, if, if, it's kinda like having a natural gas line running through, across your yard, and you can't hook into it, you know, or, or something like that, where if this guy has a sewer line, that if there's a, a problem with it, and repairs have to be done that go through his yard, gonna get his yard dug up and what have you, so, I don't have a, I guess at this point, not a problem with somebody, a property owner, tying into something that's already on his property, but I'm not ready, you know, I, I don't know whether that lets the camel's nose in the tent, and the next thing you know, we're in court, or somebody's in court, and they want 300 homes on a, you know, high density, small lot subsidy. I don't feel that I singularly have enough information to make a decision on that, whether or not something could be constructed, written, where this is a one-shot, one-deal, one-lot thing, and anything in the future is on its own, or whether this is the, as I say, it's this is the, the crack in the dam that's gonna let it flood of houses and septic's and so on.
So let me suggest this, I mean, there is no harm in setting this aside, force to get a little bit more information, and ask a question, and certainly, we could ask the guy to come in, hey, you know, give us confidence that you're not just, you know, staging this. And, you know, at least one of the trustees raised the concern, and voted no to this in Auburn, and he and I have been missing each other on the phone, but we don't want to talk to him, but it does, I mean, there's no, we're not really doing any harm to the guy today, so.
As far as I know.
If, if we could, maybe just set this aside, and ask him to come in next week and talk to us, this is a pretty big lot, that, where his man cave is gonna be on, I mean, is there some reason he can't septic the property? I mean, other than the fact that there's a sewer pipe running along there?
Yeah, I forget exactly how big, how big that parcel is, not real wide. It's not real wide, but, yeah.
So that might, might pose challenges for putting in leach and trench.
My question.
It's a pretty good size.
It's a very long lot, it's just not very wide, so, yeah, he probably has room to put it on there, I don't know.
I get, yeah.
This is, this is a parcel that you're talking about.
It seemed like it was 10 or 12 acres or something.
Jerry, can you hear?
20, 23 acres. It sucked from an Auburn resident.
23 acres, was that one? Or was it the other?
You could just add one, twenty.
Well, 23 acres, you could hypothetically put some lots on, with 23 acres.
So, we're wondering what the frontage is.
We just need all the information to make a decision.
The question I would have is, you know, jury's saying, he says capacity, so to bring in a larger parcel would be a couple million dollars, is there any way that we can ever be compelled to spend that money?
That's a, that's.
That would be the danger.
That's mine.
Because, you know, if we can never be compelled, that doesn't make any logical sense for anybody to spend that kind of money to develop a parcel that size, if they got spent $2 million.
But if you've got a couple, if you've got a couple hundred acres, though, and you've been put in half a lot of housing, $2 million is not that much.
I don't know if he said, how many? I don't know, it's probably.
The golf course, I'm.
What is it?
180.
180, okay.
That's close enough.
So, you know, again, I think a little more information, we can make a more informed decision, so I'd like to ask that we set it aside.
I have no problem with that.
All right, you're making this work really hard, Jerry.
The next, next few items here are kind of some adjustments to our job classification and job descriptions for some supervisory positions. As I've been going through and kind of reevaluating the department, how things are operating, one of the things I was looking at was, that are job descriptions, and it was looking like that some of the job descriptions were written at a time where they were being written for a certain person to be put into those positions. So as I was going back through them, there were some requirements in those job descriptions that did not make any sense, one of which was our water, water supervisor position required a Class II water license, water, a Class II, we, we will never get to a Class II water system unless the EPA. Water, a class two, we will never get to a class two water system unless the EPA changes their requirements or definitions of what a class two system is, or if suddenly all the aquifers in Ohio, in Jack County dried up and we had to sewer the county. It's around 26,000 connections that you have to have, so, to get the class two. So one of the things that has changed, the requirement down to a class one, which meets all of our existing systems. That would also then fall for the operations manager bringing that down. Right now, that system, that requires a class three license, so bring that water requirement down to a class one. The operations manager position, right, or not operations manager, but maintenance and operations supervisor, right now requires a class two water, a class two wastewater and a class one water. The operations manager covers the sewer site, there's not a requirement for him to really need a water license, so eliminate the water license requirement for that, so it's just a class two wastewater. And then the, for lab supervisor, one of the things is just adjusting who the lab reports to instead of reporting from, to the operations manager. Right now, you report directly to a system sanitary engineer.
All makes sense to me?
The other one I didn't mention here, sorry, is our operator, for a class two operator, some reason the job description was written that they need to have 36 months' experience. To get a class two license, you only need 24 months, or just kind of bringing the, that job description in line with what the requirements are to get that license. So that kind of covers, is it 11 through 15?
Through what, 15?
Through 15.
Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job description for lab supervisor number 2306 to be effective June 7, 2016. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job description for operations manager number 2311, reducing required water license from class three to class one to be effective June 7, 2016. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job description for operations and maintenance supervisor number 2323, removing the requirement for a class one water license to be effective June 7, 2016. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job description for water supervisor number 2327, reducing the required water license from class two to class one to be effective June 7, 2016. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised job description for plant operator number 2313, amending required experience from 36 months to 24 months to be effective June 7, 2016.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Commissioner Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Spittley? Aye. Mr. Cliffel? Aye.
The next item then is kind of a follow on to that, is again, more review of the department, and adjusting our organizational chart. Currently, right now, the chart starts with director and then direct under that is sanitary engineer and assistant sanitary engineer, and then it kind of splits out from there to the different departments. It makes more sense, my feeling, to take that assistant sanitary engineer position and pull it out to be same as the operations manager. The operations manager then would be overall, the field, field personnel being our operator, sewer operators, water and McFarland, and then the assistant sanitary engineer would be over the engineering side as well as the laboratory. So taking the lab, the laboratory currently is under the operations manager, so put that under the assistant sanitary engineer. So kind of we have two, from the director and sanitary engineer position, it splits out to two individuals who then are kind of covering the different, the different sections of the department of field and office. And then the other thing, the other change is something we've been doing, just kind of bringing the ownership chart closer to what we've been doing, more or less in our maintenance, in our maintenance section, separate that out into, we have a group that does kind of our preventative, preventative maintenance and then our group that does repairs. So preventative maintenance is cleaning, cleaning, jetting the sewer lines, televising, you know, getting to see what's in there, and then the repair groups, kind of the group that comes in and makes the repairs as needed. This is just kind of getting the organizational chart to be more really how we're running the department rather than how it was set up 14 or 20 years ago.
Four people.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve the revised organizational chart to be effective June 7, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Spittley?
Aye.
Mr. Cliffel?
Aye.
Next one is to advertise internally for a water supervisor position. This position, our water supervisor, Terry Zion, had retired about four or five years ago now. At that time, we chose to not fill that position immediately, kind of see how we could run, if we could run the department with, without the water supervisor. It really hasn't worked out, there's actually a gentleman in our department who's more or less been doing the water supervisor position over the last two years, so this is kind of giving him, getting him the opportunity to actually fill that position. And that's kind of, you know, I come from the private sector, it's my original background, where you did the job for a year or two before you actually got the promotion, but it's kind of the same thing in this situation.
You want to do the other one same time?
Yeah, and the next one is to, with the revised organizational chart, to have an assistant sanitary engineer, advertise internally for that position, so we have, then we will have the operations manager and assistant sanitary engineer over the sections.
We still have a sanitary, a sanitary engineer on the chart that'll be vacant because Jerry was both those jobs.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise internally for the position of water supervisor number 2327 for a period of five days. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise internally for the position of assistant sanitary engineer number 2303 for a period of five days.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Spittley?
Aye.
Mr. Cliffel?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. That comes up.
Thank you.
Half an hour later.
Thank you.
And the next one is just asking the board to grant permission for us to advertise, because the intent will be to have a public hearing to discuss the 2017 tax budget on Tuesday, June 28, as we typically do. So we present the tax budget to you on that date and then within the next week or so, then hopefully you can take action to adopt the tax budget, because we have to file the adopted tax budget with the order before July 15. So this is just keeping our typical schedule on the tax budget.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board grant permission to advertise to hold a public hearing to discuss the Jock County 2017 tax budget, to be held on Tuesday, June 28, 2016 at 9:30 a.m. Notice that this public hearing will be advertised on June 16, 2016 and on the county website.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Spittley?
Aye.
Mr. Cliffel?
Aye.
Okay, we have the document received after Aurora's review and input with the USGS. There's a little change in the initial paragraph, talking about the connection between that letter and, which kind of lays out a scope of work and the contract that you executed last week, and it's now directed directly to this office rather than to the planning director. So we're asking you to acknowledge and sign off that you're accepting that revised letter.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board acknowledge, accept and execute the revised letter from the United States Department of the Interior and US Geological Survey.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Spittley?
Aye.
Mr. Cliffel?
Aye.
With that being, with that, I had received an email from someone regarding, you know, that there was political motivation for us to do that, or just politically driven circumstance, and I feel that, you know, we did our due diligence with this. We've had people that, you know, sit on the board, at the planning commission, that also, you know, never really concerned that I, that I had heard of any of the board members on the planning commission to exert any kind of opinion, you know, vocally here at, at one of the meetings that put, you know, put us at major odds. I mean, we had the director for planning, we had health department, we had a number of the people that spoke on the, on this issue. I'm not an expert in water and I don't try to be, so I've got to basically listen to the advice of what we're getting from the people that work for the county and for the betterment of the county. And with that, with those recommendations, I felt that it was the best interest to move forward on this. Nothing politically motivated. So, that's it.
I think being supportive of townships, because a lot of townships expressed their support for this plan, but I think Commissioner Claypool's analysis, looking, going forward into approving the process is also what I had, I, a long time.
Well, and let me comment on that, because from my perspective, and I will stand on this, this wall monitor activity is a political activity. Based on all the analysis that I did, it is not used. It's not used by the health department who asks for it. Why they ask for it, I'm not sure. It's asked for by the planning commission, even though they don't use it. I mean, and I would challenge anybody, I've asked it two dozen times. Give me a citation, show me, just show me where you use it, show me a document, show me something that gives me evidence that you use this information. And to date, nobody has brought that forward. The townships, and there's only been a couple that have expressed a concern over this or an issue over this, use case law, and I've read the cases, the case law don't reference this study. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of bending to the will of the pundits of folks that want to do this, but to a large extent, and if I had Bob sitting here, he sat there in that chair, if we go back and review the tape, he said they use it in general. They're using some, I don't know what that means, use it in general. So, yeah, I, I still am of the belief that we're doing this for political purposes because people are basically bending to the emotion of the event, and that's okay, it's understandable. I did the same thing, I voted yes to do this, I voted yes to move forward on it. I can tell you next year, it may be a different situation. We're going to be making movement and I'm hoping we do make a change because there is valuable water level, or water related information that we collect that we're not using in the county. I'm hoping that we-
That's three years ago.
I'm hoping that we get to the point where we've actually kind of got our head around that and that we can create a consensus that it makes sense to do this. Because the water level stuff, we are the only county in the entire state of Ohio that's doing this to the level that we're doing. I don't know, unless somebody can show me rational, nobody has to this point, show me rational reason why that's happening. You know, yeah, I might get, but that's okay, I'll, I'll be, I'll bend to the political will, because, you know, it's not that important of a fight. There's some things I'll go to my grave on, this is not one of them. And so with that said, I mean, I understand what you're saying and you, based on the information you had, I can understand the decision that you, like, were making and I appreciate all your patience with this because you guys were very patient.
Well, and I feel that we, you know, I speak for myself, I don't know what Blake says, but at the end of the day, we realize and I, I agree with the fact that this has given an eye opening to making some, you know, some steps to look into more efficient ways or what is the, you know, what other ways can we do this to either not at all or better, and gives us a little bit of time to do that. And I just think that, you know, moving forward, whether it's, you know, the committee supposedly that's going to be established here with, between water resources, health department and planning, that that's going to be developed, you know, I guess that's something that the planning commission board members should maybe look to push at this point. And if there's, if there's a delay in it, I think that then, you know, we need to, we need to basically have accountability on some of those people too, if they stall.
And I, and I think you're right, right now it comes to accountability, I was hoping to have a shorter term on this whole thing, I was hoping to reset the fiscal clock, because we're kind of off the fiscal clock, put them on the or fiscal clock, that didn't happen. Again, it's not worth, you know, fighting too hard over this because it's just not, it's not that important. But one of the important points that I wanted to make, and I want to reinforce here, is that every dollar we spend, of taxpayer dollars, we have to be looking at. And it's right and proper to question every single dollar, no matter how small it is, because if it was my money, I would do that. And so, what is the old term, a fool and his money are soon separated? If we don't, if we're not about doing that, if we just out of habit say, yeah, we're going to spend that 20,000, 30,000, 40,000, pretty soon we have millions. So, no, I think that all parties, including the health department, the planning commission, even the USGS, Martha, who is a great individual, all said, you know, there was a lot of value in going to this exercise because it pointed out some things that nobody was really thinking about. So, anyway, we're through that, we don't need to pull labor. And I appreciate your, your comment and, you know, just helps to get it out in the open, light of day, all that kind of stuff, so. So, thank you.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board appoint Frankie Intimity as Ultimate Court Counsel for the Noaka Board of Directors meeting on Friday, June 10, 2016.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Spittley?
Aye. Mr. Cliffel? Aye. I gave to the two of you, two letters and articles that came through, and I thought you were carding on this letter as I went back and looked at the email list, it appears maybe you weren't. Did you carding them on this letter?
The county, Bob Weitzek.
Okay, we needed to do that. But, a month ago, Bob brought up in the health department meeting, an issue, and that issue is that health departments across the state are being, are being asked to be accredited. The impact of that is a financial disaster, according to Bob Weitzek, and according to this guy who wrote this article from, I forget which county, Lisbon County. And so, and not necessary. So, Bob asked if we would write a letter, I drafted two, one to John Akon, one to Sarah Lautere, asking them to push back on this accreditation because of Jock County, it's not necessary. And, but I'm not going to get into all of the reasons, Bob can come over and reference it himself in terms of why that's not necessary. But I would like to support our health department, Bob asked for that, we've had various townships who have weighed in and supported Bob in this, and understanding that the health department is really a creature of the townships. It's not a county department, it's a creature of the townships. And so, but I would like to support them because it's the right thing to do. And so I'm making, I'm just giving this to you for awareness and asking for you to look at it, talk to Bob if you feel necessary, but I'd like to execute this next week if possible. I sent it to John, to Sarah.
What about Patterson?
Pardon?
What about Patterson?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you know, I always-
John Patterson and Free Kavaro, don't forget the two of them.
Thank you for that, you're absolutely right. I always forget them because they're not of our ilk, but, or at least not of mine.
They're, yeah, they're-
But you're absolutely right, I shouldn't, John's a good guy, I like just-
They don't represent us either, do they? In Monson? Yeah. They're mine.
They're actually, John's a good guy.
Yeah, I live in God's country, they're, they're mine.
Conversation, so he's a good guy. So I will add those, those two.
We're, we're sitting is God's country too. You cannot claim exclusive.
It's an annex, the northeast is where it's at.
So, one last item, and I apologize for surprising you with this, I was going to send an email out and make a request earlier, but I just thought I would take this opportunity since we're here and we're talking. The issue of Noaka, we got a Noaka board meeting coming up. There's two things that I'd like to, I'd like to make a request, and it has to come from the board, it can't come from me, to Laura LaChapelle, to have her look into two things for us. And if you will approve that, then she's willing to do that. One of which is to ask, since we are the members, we the county paid the membership dues to Noaka, ask for us to be the gateway for all projects going to Noaka. Today, Chardon, Middlefield, townships and so forth can make requests directly to Noaka. And on the surface, that may sound like it's an okay thing to do, but consider this, the negative side of this. Every dollar that's given directly to a city, let's say for sidewalks, comes out of our highways. So Joe Cattell isn't funded for his highways, or we aren't funded for buggy trails in Middlefield because the dollars, and that decision is, goes, is redirected around the county or the county engineer for whatever Noaka's purpose is. And the point I want to make is, is this is Noaka's decision, it's not our decision, and we're permitting that. As a board member, I object to that. In addition to that, clearly, we are disadvantaged on the Noaka board. We have three members, that's not the way this was originally contracted for and configured but in Noaka, there was three members per county originally, and over the years, we were bullied, cajoled, or however that worked out, into the situation we're currently in, it disadvantages us as a county. And I, I'm not, I've been flummoxed over what to do about that exactly. At one time, Cleveland sued, because they were disadvantaged, they felt. At one time, Cleveland sued, because they were disadvantaged, they felt, by the political situation. There was a reason they were able to sue, and I'd like to know what that was. And so we can ask Laura two things. First of all, can we become the gateway for all projects, so Joe Cattell simply gets review rights on projects that are going to Nauaka, so it's our membership, our dues, and then we can work with the townships and cities and so forth to make sense of the projects, and help to coordinate with everybody to make sure it's in the best overall interest for Joga County? In addition to that, to see if there's a legal way for us to put ourselves in a better position. And it just requires a little research, gives us information, it doesn't do any harm outside of, you know, spending some of Laura's time to investigate it. So I'd like to ask your approval to do those two things, to investigate those, and we can make a decision downstream whether we want to do it or not, but at least we would know what was possible. And so, I'm going to throw that on the table for discussion, or approval, or whatever you want to do.
I don't have a problem with this.
What are your thoughts, Blake?
Well, I don't disagree, I mean, basically, with your statement, it's the obvious, we're at a disadvantage, there's three people in the county. I'm not sure if any of the municipalities or, or Chardon, if they pay any dues toward the...
They don't pay anything, right? It's completely... I don't have a problem with doing that, I've gotten into discussions down there with how we got from, what I was told was the origin of the beast, to where we are now. And generally, there's usually some staffer that gets up and says, oh, oh, no, no, there was someone who was representing, God knows where, on the original document. Well, I'm at a disadvantage, because I don't have it. You know, I said, well, there was no Cleveland representative, it was three commissioners from each county, as it was told to me. And as I, somewhere, we found a document, some, I forget even who found it, from sixty-seven, sixty-six...
I came up with the historic, I asked them for the historical documents that put us at, because there was a contract we signed. Nobody has showed us that we've changed that contract, and that was a question...
Burns and, I forget who the commissioners were. Parsons. Parsons has signed it, and I had a copy of that, I probably do, it's probably in some pile of paper somewhere. And I read it, and it sounded to me pretty straightforward, each county had three representatives. Were no mention that I saw of cities and...
Bicycle...
RTA, and EPA, and ODAD, and God knows who else. And, and all of a sudden, it's like, all, the way it stands now, and you can correct me, but I think I'm right, there's forty-five people on this board, twenty-five are from the city of Cleveland in some capacity or another.
Kyahuga County.
Kyahuga County, and so the rest of the counties could vote no, and it wouldn't matter. And how it went from that to this is a mystery to me. I have no problem with that. I also have, you know, I have a problem with any time you take money that's earmarked for one thing and then divert it to something else. I understand occasionally that happens, and it should be on a case-by-case, one-time issue, and not a, not, oh, well, we've always done it that way. I mean, when I was there last meeting, they told me that there's, God, I can't remember the numbers, I hate, like, forty million dollars in projects outstanding or something, and they're broke, we don't have any money. So then they wanted to try to borrow it from the state interest bank.
Borrow from the future.
Yeah, from the CIB, a loan thing, and they said, no, they're broke, so then they wanted to borrow it from the Port Authority at some interest rate that, you know, if it was twenty years ago, you'd be going, wow, three percent, that's a good deal. But, I'd be excited to put money somewhere right now that I was guaranteed three percent for. I mean, you know, you put it in your savings account, you get what, a tenth or two-tenths maybe? So I have no problem doing that. What are they going to do? Get mad at us?
Well, I mean, we're just investigating, at this point, we take no actions, it's just having Laura look at it. So if I could get a resolution to ask her to look at the two things, look at our legal right to be able to sue them, to write the...
You want to try to write that. Make a motion, and, you got your recorder going? State the motion the way you want it, and I'll move in a hill second.
I'd like to have a motion for Laura to be able to look at our legal ability to be able to sue to balance the, our representation on the board, and to look at the past contract to find out how it got to where we are today. Secondly, to have us service the gateway for all projects going to Nauaka.
That's it?
That's it.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Muir?
Aye.
Mr. Spudlair?
Aye.
Commissioner Clifford?
Thank you, that's all I know.
So we adjourned, but we got something else.
What do you want to talk about, the seventh?
Oh, yeah, the seventh. July seventh would be our normally scheduled meeting, because July fourth, Monday, is a holiday, so we wouldn't have a meeting on the fifth Tuesday, so we normally then go to the morning of the seventh. Having forgotten that rule, I'll take responsibility for that, we were searching for a time to do the emergency operations training at DES, and the seventh appeared to be a time when everybody's calendar was open. So the question would be, would you be supportive of having, having the meeting of the seventh, hopefully abbreviate it, and start a little earlier, say eight-thirty at DES?
That's a Thursday?
That's a Thursday.
At nine in the morning.
Well, we have, we try and start maybe eight-thirty, because I wanted to get the training started sooner than that.
Yes, we just have to get with Dale to make sure that they can, they're flexible in starting that training a little later, in holding the meeting at that time over there, or either that or changing the time of our regular meeting and holding it in the afternoon or after the training is over.
Yeah, the challenge would be, because there's no meeting on Tuesday, the agenda has a potential pileup, there may be a challenge to keep the meeting short. So depending on your availability, the alternative would be to have our meeting here in the afternoon, you should schedule it, and do the training in the morning, so...
Either way, we have to do a resolution to move the meeting to DES. So if you're looking at moving it to DES, we could do it today, we have to do it by resolution, so...
Let me ask this question, with the training, how many people are going to be there?
I asked Dave that question yesterday, because he said it would...
I mean, it's, you know, some public safety participants, it's training on the, you know, on the overall emergency system in preparation for the peri-drill this fall.
My question being, if it's a, if it's our meeting, I don't know how many people we would have, but if there's people that are there for training, there's only a limited number of seats in that facility.
I don't, yeah, I don't think there's a danger of exceeding the capacity of that room, where there were the folks who had these... I think we could set up for a meeting like we did that evening meeting, and there was a room, there's quite a few hundred of them, so I don't think we would have...
The evening meeting, we didn't have a training session.
No.
So it was just...
I don't think there's that many participants.
I'm just asking the question, I don't know how many people are coming for the training, because I've been there for those peri-drill trainings and so on. Of course, we sit in the, we sit in the lowes, and they sit in the cheap seats out there, but it usually looks pretty crowded to me. For those of you that don't know, there's, there's two rooms. We sit in the classroom, around a table, and then all the people that man the radios, phones, and so on, are in another room. Doesn't have anything to do with the class system. I don't care.
I can cancel, I don't care.
What do you guys think?
Yeah, I'm good with whatever you want to do.
We have a core, we don't have to cancel it unless you, unless you want to.
Yeah.
The others two are going to be here on the night, we don't have to...
July seventh, Thursday.
We won't have to cancel.
Yeah.
And we've got a required Jaga, what is that, emergency operations training, center training.
Oh, there you go, okay. So that's already in the calendar, right?
Yes.
That's what we're timed to, I mean, I have no problem with that.
We're going to put that in conjunction with our meeting, and my only question was, how many people are coming to the...
Thursday meeting?
Training.
Well, or the training session, because, you know...
Because they have their schedule already set for the training session, that was why they are looking at starting it in...
I believe the people that Roger invited are just the staff of DES, so just the staff of DES and...
And us, that's why I asked who all was coming.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Well, in the past, when we had those meetings, we had...
I don't think we have a capacity problem with, you know, or maybe...
People from law enforcement, we have all...
No, it's not, it's not everybody that comes to a peri-drill, no.
Oh, okay, well, never mind.
No, I think it's just the operations, like the executive group, that was being, that it was going to have changes made to, and there we go over that. So we can, we have to take action to move the meeting to DES, have to do the resolution for that, so we can change the time then.
We have to do that now, or can we do that next Tuesday, right?
Right, I just want to know what you wanted to do then.
I'll get a little more information...
Yeah, I don't have a problem with doing that.
And what the agenda is, just to know, you know, confirm that if they bump that back, even if they had to bump it back a full hour, at nine-thirty, would that really cause a major problem? You know?
I don't have a problem.
Okay, all right, we'll let you know and make a decision next Tuesday.
Commissioners, it is important, because we have, the drill this year is evaluated by the NRC, which we have every other year, so it's important for us to get up to speed and to do it right, because somebody's going to be watching more than usual in the drill this year.
And what happens if we fail? Do they take our birthday away, or what's the...
Yes, and they whack us and stuff.
They turn off, they turn off the new plan.
And they will be deeply disappointed.
You're going to get a big watch and reactor.
The deadline is August seventeenth, and then the evaluated drill is actually Tuesday the thirteenth, and we will have to cancel session for that day, and I was looking at the calendar on that, with the Labor Day and fair and all that, changing up the schedules around, we have session at the fair on the first, but then we moved session from Tuesday the sixth to the eighth, so we either have the opportunity to cancel the thirteenth and not have to worry about that week, or we can look at scheduling an additional meeting on Thursday, that fifteenth, fifteenth, about that week.
In September.
Yeah, in September.
You're asking for way too many decisions, with nothing on paper in front of me.
I'm just trying to look at that, that's all.
I don't know what days were...
So I know Laura's going to have some time, that he's going to be gone in the end of August and into September, so I just try to make sure that it's...
Got two people that can show up.
So if you're scheduled on a vacation, I mean, I'd like to do some checking.
Have to confer with my wife, she'll...
That was all the evidence, man.
We have a motion, I move to adjourn.
Okay.
See you.
Bye.